And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, can you do roll call, please? Gabriel.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
McKinney.
Here.
Pelikas.
Here.
Shumway.
Here.
Schuster.
Here.
Stoner.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Somerville.
Here.
That's nine present and zero absent, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Items, any proclamations, presentations this evening? All right. City Manager, do we have any announcements tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. And I regret to inform everybody, due to our city clerk being out of town, I don't have a special ordinance to read tonight, but I'll make it up next week. All right, we'll go on to item number five, disclosures by city council members. Does anybody have any disclosures tonight? Okay, we'll go to item number six. Vice Mayor.
All right. I move that the following changes to the agenda be approved. They are on our consent agenda. It's item eight.
Oh.
Oh, thank you. So, our first item, number one, says July 10, or July 20. It's actually going to be July 10 for our work session. And item number two is deleted.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Shumway. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, that carries. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I move that the agenda be set as changed.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Gabriel. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Vice Mayor.
I move that the consent agenda be approved and that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Schuster. City Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
Hanson.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Pelikas.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Stoner.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. Moving on to the regular agenda, item number 10, Councilor Stoner.
Thanks, Mayor. I move to award the bid for the Turner Track Detention Pond project to Simon Contractors, Laramie, Wyoming, in the amount of $724,540.87, along with contingency of $1,542.13 for a total amount of $726,000.
Eighty-three dollars.
Eighty-three dollars, thank you, Charles, to approve the contract and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
Second by Councilor Schuster. City Engineer, go.
All right, Your Honorable Mayor, members of council, the item before you tonight is to award a construction contract for the expansion of the detention pond at Boulder and Beach Street. This is across from the high school and will include improvements to the inlet and outlet structures of the detention pond. Based on the drainage studies that have been recently completed in this area, it has been documented that drainage infrastructure is drastically undersized to handle the stormwater. Many of you will remember some videos that we shared last year at the council meeting of the flooding of Regency, and that was only during a very minor event, so that's kind of why we need detention ponds in this area. Two ponds were designed and then bid to address the stormwater issues. The first one is before you tonight, and then the second one is at the end of Regency. Unfortunately, we're unable to afford the Regency pond at this time, but we'll look for ways to do that in the future. The Boulder Beach Pond will expand the existing detention pond up to the Glacier Street Apartments or across, basically, from Crystal Court. We'll also improve the existing inlet swells, which have had erosion issues for years. And also, the outlet of the pond will be improved so that the stormwater can be held back to fully utilize the pond. With that, I can answer any questions you have regarding this project.
Questions for city staff. Councilor Hanson.
Just one question. The Boulder Beach Pond already exists, so are you making it wider or deeper?
Uh, we're, uh, Mayor, Councilor Hanson, we're just basically making it longer because of the existing outlet structures, we're unable to make it any deeper. But we'll make it, basically, we'll kind of double the size of it in length.
Extending it in what direction?
Um, trying to...
East, isn't it?
Yeah.
East, right?
Yeah.
East, towards, towards the school there, the...
Uh, yes, that's correct.
Getting, not in his...
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions for city staff? Vice Mayor?
No, no question. I have a comment.
Okay.
And you're not ready for that.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments from the public on this item? Okay. Comments, discussion. Vice Mayor?
All right, you know, so I know I understand we have to do this because of the drainage problem that's over there, but it is such a prime piece of real estate in our Turner Track that I feel like I want to see something other than a detention pond there. So, maybe, you know, if someday we could have underground-type detention set up and something else sitting there across from the high school, I don't know. Let me just, I'm just dreaming, I guess, for the day, for the afternoon.
Any other discussion by council on this item? Councilor Schuster?
Some of the councils weren't here, so one of the things I need to state is, the very first cell, it was almost dry during this flooding because everything went through it and went straight out the pipe, then on down and rushed into the parking lot of the church and everything like that. So, one of the intentions of this is to slow the water down that's in the first cell. So, it's not so much the size right now is metering the water. It would have helped a tremendous amount on that. So, one of the things that he said is they will be improving the actions of the detention cells, so we give it time for some of it to just soak in and stay, which would be nice in our climate, too. Because, like you said, it's such a primary, and a lot of this is if we can keep it so that delays when it releases, maybe we then, at that time, can help ourselves with some better inventions in.
Any other discussion or comments by council? City Clerk, can you do a roll call, please? Schuster.
Yes.
Pelikas.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Stoner.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. On to item number 11, Councilor McKinney.
Of course, I erase it. I move to approve Resolution 2018-45, authorizing the submittal build transportation grant to the United States Department of Transportation to support the reconstruction of Iverson Avenue, including improvements from 15th Street to 1st Street, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign.
Second. Second by Vice Mayor.
City Manager. Good evening, council. I distributed some information to you shortly before this meeting that we have been working on off and on throughout the day, and because I realize that you may not have seen that email, we have hard copies, and I'll discuss what was in that correspondence. Sarah is also going to talk to you a little bit about this potential grant, as well as the possibility of seeking funding for Iverson Street corridor through this build grant. You'll recall I mentioned to the council, gosh, I don't know, probably two weeks ago, that staff became aware of this federal grant opportunity in mid to, in the second or third week of June. This grant was previously called a Tiger Grant. It was not available to cities of our size. We received word about three weeks ago, two weeks, two and a half, three weeks ago, that apparently the rules have been changed to allow for cities of our size to be eligible to apply. However, none of the rules of the program have been modified to fit cities of our size, and that's important for the content of the conversation we're going to have subsequently. In any case, not wanting to miss any opportunities, the staff started vetting out what projects we have in queue might be suitable for this kind of funding, and it pays for transportation projects. Sarah can give you more detail, but I'm going to skip over that detail for this purpose. Last night, the mayor made some inquiries. We met with her this morning, and so trying to dispense to you all the information that we were able to discuss with Andy this morning, I've created this spreadsheet right here, which I hope is a quick and simple, easy way to share with you what we had shared verbally with Mayor Somerville this morning. We identified three possible projects for the build Tiger Grant. One, we talked about briefly in a work session a few weeks ago, when Councilor Hanson asked if public transportation, busing, was an eligible grant activity for this build grant, and we understand that it is. It was actually on our list of three potential projects, and as I told you a few weeks ago, our understanding is that ACTA is, you know, inactive, maybe defunct, I'm not entirely sure, and we are not aware of any program of work or planned project that ACTA has currently. That's your Albany County Transportation Authority. So, that's your first project on the list, and based on this kind of evaluation matrix, we understand they're inactive, and consequently, all other factors regarding whether this project would be, whether that would be a viable project for this grant funding are unknown, so clearly, it's not a viable project if we don't even know. So, the other two projects that we looked at that are city-specific projects and wouldn't necessarily involve any other entity like ACTA are, we looked at Iverson Street, as you know, and the resolution that's on your agenda tonight deals with Iverson. We also did talk about West Laramie paving. Specifically, we have, harkening back to the conversation we had a few weeks ago at the work session, we have about 12 miles of, 11 and a half, 12 paved miles of gravelled roads in the West Laramie neighborhood. We have an additional five and a half miles of gravelled roads elsewhere in the community. So, we did actually talk about that possibility, and you can see, I've just jotted down for you quickly what we shared with Andy this morning. This program allows for a program of projects, or what I would call kind of phases, so you could do phase one, and then phase two, and phase three, which we like. So, the question was, does the potential project have phase of projects? And so, comparing the two city-only projects across the bottom, any sort of gravel-to-pavement conversion could be phased, as could Iverson Street. Our plan for Iverson, although we've been focused on the 900 to 1500 blocks in the last two years, and we have conceptually designed those 900 to 1500 blocks, the original plan calls for a phased improvement all the way down to 1st Street. So, both of those projects met that threshold of if we get it the first time, do we have a program of projects that we could lock in subsequent future phases? The other section that we kind of looked at were the fiscal factors, is what I call them here. The grant requires that you create a new revenue source. Gravel-to-pavement street conversion possibly could create a new revenue source, and this is what the mayor and Sarah and I discussed this morning, if special improvement districts were approved and voted in by the property owners, but that would be in their hands. It's not something that you, as a governing body, can impose. In addition, gravel-to-pavement conversions, in my opinion, would potentially, especially in our business-owned areas, facilitate more rapid growth of commerce, more business activity. Now, whether or not that meets the definition of new revenue under the grant, federal grant definitions, is another question. For the Iverson Street project, we believe that there could be some additional investment resulting, not only through direct investment, but return on that investment that might come to the university through growth at the university, expansion of the campus, and increased attendance and tuition dollars. And then also, our original study from 2007/8 that conceived of the Iverson corridor project from 15th to downtown, talked about the ability for the downtown to be enhanced and businesses there to grow, because there would be the sort of pipeline of easy access for, you know, what, 15,000 people on the campus to get downtown easily and do business there. So, both the projects had merits in that category. The other fiscal factor that we looked at is, does the city have sufficient revenue to complete underground infrastructure? Because this project isn't going to pay for water and sewer lines, we're not, we don't believe at this point it pays for storm drainage either. We have storm drainage that we're going to need to on Iverson, but it's certainly a smaller dollar proposition than the storm drainage needs that we have in the West Laramie neighborhood or in the other 5.5 miles of unpaved roads. So, there's, you know, kind of a mixed bag there. Then we look at the readiness factors, and this is where we really felt like Iverson was a more well-positioned project. Iverson is likely to meet the timeline of being done with environmental assessments and permitting by June of 2019. There's still some question, I'll be candid. Iverson isn't a great project. It may also be able to be under construction, this was a key deadline, by September of 2020, and there's a typo on my spreadsheet I just saw. We have to be under construction by September of 2020, and I know that seems two years away, but we believe we would be awarded this grant maybe in January of 2019, so that really narrows our horizon to maybe 18 months and possibly shorter. Because this is a federal grant, there is extensive, we have to do environmental analysis everywhere that we would put money into the ground. Those environmental processes alone can take six to nine months. So, time and the available time is a really big factor, and frankly, a really big problem, no matter what project we would pursue. And then the third readiness factor is, can we have final engineering on this project? And that's engineering sufficient to substantiate construction done by, really, I think, this is my opinion, the engineers can disagree if they wish to, I think we'd have to have that engineering done by about June of 2020 at the latest, and ideally, probably more January, February of 2020, so we can get out to bid and hopefully get the best pricing on the project. If we were to put it to bid in June for initiation of construction in September, October, I don't know how that pricing would look. So, again, there's a typo in that column, it's 2020, and I apologize. Then the third kind of category of requirements that are coming with this grant are what's called a benefit-to-cost analysis, BCA. This is the guidance document just for completing the benefit-cost analysis. I'll be candid with you, this is just for the benefit-cost analysis, which is one of eight sections of this grant application. Sarah may have examples of what these look like, but most communities, and bear in mind, this grant was originally sized for exceptionally large communities like Chicago, New York City. The benefit-cost analysis is incredibly detailed. We are still uncertain if we have staff capacity to even touch what is required in the benefit-cost analysis for Iverson, and certainly, you can see on my spreadsheet here, we didn't believe there was any way we could complete this benefit-cost analysis for an entire neighborhood, which is West Laramie, and potentially even more, in three weeks. Most of your larger communities actually commission and hire this out to private, independent economic analysis firms to complete. It involves having traffic studies of every street, it involves having safety and crash data, including vehicular crash, pedestrian crash, crash, pedestrian vehicle interactions, and then applying valuation assessments to those. So, you have to create cost data for things like safety or lack of safety. It's a very complex thing. So, anyway, I share all of this with you because, one, I wanted you to understand the conversation we had with the mayor this morning, so we're all kind of on equal footing as far as what we know. Now, Andy has raised the question of West Laramie, I think it's a valid question, and as I said, even staff went through this analysis. There's just simply no way that we could probably put together a competitive applica- I'm not going to say there, that probably, I'm going to say there is no way that we can put together a competitive application for an entire West Laramie paving project in basically the next two weeks. This application is due July 19th. We are skeptical that we can put together a truly competitive application for Iverson, but it has a lot of merits, like we do have some traffic count data, we have some crash data, we've done a conceptual design, we understand and have already identified what environmental analysis need to be, and what weaknesses there may be in that corridor from 9th to 15th Street. However, I did, after talking with the mayor this morning, I did think, well, you know, the scope of a paving project is just, it's just not doable, simply, I'm going to tell you. Even if we could pull it off and throw in a half-baked application and get the money, there is no way your staff has sufficient time, bandwidth, capacity to pave an entire neighborhood in 18 months from receipt of grant to when we have to be under construction. And even if you have the staff capacity, I don't believe that you have the private capacity in your private markets, you don't have sufficient construction companies, asphalt, and probably engineering services, because we would have to contract out engineering for, like I said, 17, 12 to 17 miles of city street. And that assumes that we would have the resources locally to put the drainage in, so it would even make sense and be fiscally responsible to put the pavement over it. That being said, I did visit with Earl today and with the engineers, and what I asked them to do is tell me what of our unpaved road sections, and we didn't have time to look at the whole city, but we did have time to look at West Laramie as a neighborhood. I said, tell me what sections of gravel road out there are pavement-ready, meaning there's drainage under those streets. And if we had the fiscal resources, could we go lay pavement and engineer a street surface? What we've arrived at is, if we reduce the scope of the project to that, it's possible that we could put in an application, I'm going to tell you straight up, it's going to be a half-baked application, and the chance of success is unlikely, and Andy's laughing because that's what I told her this morning, I said, well, it'd be half-baked. But it would amount to 2.5 miles that we have identified as maybe ready to receive payment because the storm drainage is in place. I've gone on a long time, I'll stop there. I want to tell you, though, I can't reinforce any stronger, even if you direct us to submit two applications, the chance of success for either one is very, very low. Iverson, we feel, Sarah and I and Earl, that from a professional ethical standpoint, we may be able to mount a, an appropriate application for Iverson that doesn't stretch the truth in a way that we would not be comfortable with. We're going to be making some arguments that we have to feel professionally comfortable with, right? For West Laramie, it feels like we would have to really stretch, and so we do have some professional reservations about throwing in a half-baked application, which is kind of our first chance to show off our capacities under a federal grant. And with that, I'll kind of leave it there. I hope that gives you some options, and we can answer questions. Oh, if I could, just one last thing, Mayor. Our intention tonight, even before Andy raised this conversation about paving gravelled roads, our intention tonight was to request that you postpone this item to the 17th, to your next meeting, for the Iverson project alone, and we would make the same request if you would give direction to us to pursue further the possibility of a second application for paving unpaved roads.
Questions? Vice Mayor?
So, I certainly understand the grant process, the federal grant process, not with the Department of Transportation, but with the Department of Education, and they will give you 102 pages of directions for a grant that is only, can only be 50 pages long. So, yeah, I totally get it. My question, though, has to do with potential other projects, other than the three we're talking about here, and I'm wondering if there is any other project that could be as close or almost as close as Iverson, and I'm thinking something at Sarah Scott, and I'm wondering if, if, if that or any others in any other parts of town that could be close like Iverson.
So, I think I would, I would say, you know, we vetted through what street projects we have in the queue and where they are, if they've had any conceptual design or not, if they're just, you know, out there, we know we need to do them, and the one that we do have some design on right now is Iverson, and that's why we aired there.
Okay.
As you know, from talking about the SPT, we have a list of streets that need to be rebuilt, but that doesn't mean that we have any plans or traffic studies or we've started that planning process, and I would ask Earl if he knows of anything...
I think he left. Engineers are here, yeah.
May I, I'm not an engineer, but Mayor, Council, we have a handful of projects that meet these fundamental, I guess, the spirit and intent of this grant program. That's not the challenge here.
Okay.
The challenge really is beyond the issues, or in addition to the issues that Janine laid out, we've got this guidance here about how to prepare a cost, a benefit-cost analysis. Earl's take on this is that this document alone is probably one year of work provided by a private consultant, and we don't have that prepared for any of our projects, nor could we have anticipated that that was in need. Certainly, we talk about cost-benefit, but we don't to the level of detail required by the Department of Transportation.
Okay.
So, on the outside, yes, Cyrus might qualify, but it's missing this fundamental piece, along with every other application that we have.
Thank you.
Councilor Hanson?
Thank you. At National League of Cities, I attend a lot of meetings concerning traffic and transportation, and I've seen the results of Tiger Grant applications of what they built, and there's always a strong emphasis on multimodal, and that's, that piques their interest, as far as that's concerned, you know, the way you lay it out with the public bus and the bicycles and the cars and the parking, et cetera. And it occurs to me, this, of course, is an ideal situation because campus downtown including some kind of a public transportation aspect. I'm just mentioning that because I've seen these grants, that seems to have a modicum of success if you have the public transportation aspect included in there. Just mentioning that. I know there's a heck of a lot of work, and I've, of course, only seen it for bigger cities because that's how it applied, you know, Milwaukee and whatever, they did this kind of stuff. But I'm just saying, if we can, it would be good if we write it in some fashion that includes the public transportation aspect for success. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, Council, absolutely, and in fact, that's why Iverson ranked in the staff's view higher than other projects because it is primed for that multimodal aspect. I've just spent the past several weeks actually researching this and reading other applications, and in fact, the city of Chicago has incorporated a bike-share program into their application, so certainly, we are very mindful of the multimodal component to this, and I do think we have a lot of opportunities here, but our diamond is awfully rough to be competitive.
Yeah.
Especially on this short of... Councilor Stoner?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a few questions about the timeline and logistics about the grant. So, is it possible for us to get rewarded money for both grants if we were to apply for both?
It is our understanding that you can submit multiple applications.
Okay. And then, do you think that, so, in the option where we kind of have a half-baked streets application in addition to the original idea with Iverson, do you think that having that half-baked compared to the Iverson application, which maybe is more thought-out, would affect the review of the Iverson application, or are they just kind of separate, do they go to different places?
I'm just going to stand up right next to Janine, so we'll be up and down. I would like, those are very good questions, and thank you very much. I would like to clarify, though, this is more than half-baked. I would be frankly submitting incomplete applications for both. One is more complete, but nevertheless, incomplete.
Okay. And a follow-up to that, do you feel that by having one to work on, you could have more time and resources to have a better shot at that one, Iverson, that one being Iverson?
I think we have a lot of the fundamental groundwork laid for an Iverson application, but nevertheless, we are missing and cannot pull together the detailed cost or benefit-cost analysis that is required, and with, again, that Earl estimated being one year of consultant work. So, I, that, that part of the application would be entirely blank, so I just want to be very clear. Even with a couple more time, we can't submit a complete application, which is, I think, something we should be concerned about.
I have a couple more.
Go ahead.
Okay. What is the timeline on the grant? So, basically, when did you, when did the law change in comparison to when we found out? And then, how do we, what is the time period going forward between when we submit and when we find out about the funding?
Sure. Honorable Mayor, Council, I had actually House Hanson in my office following an NLC meeting. He was incredibly excited about the opportunity for this grant because the Trump administration has put a big emphasis on rural communities, so that, gosh, I think that was early to mid-spring is when we started keeping our eyes on the radar for this, and then, in that time, I have been engaging in weekly webinars about how to prepare this application. I've been chatting with staff and our city manager and spending hours each week, frankly, researching this possibility. And we, when I put this on the agenda, I really did feel like Iverson was our best bet, but in that continual review process, I kind of hit a wall with this benefit-cost I kind of hit a wall with this benefit cost analysis. And that might be a major challenge for us.
And is this an annual grant application?
This is an annual application. And what I, I think staff believes is that we can use the application as itself, as a work plan for the year moving forward to try to get any ducks in a row that we don't already have lined up. We do have a lot lined up, but not a significant duck that's being asked for. I'm kind of delved into metaphors, excuse me, I'm sorry. Thank you, that's all.
I could add to the timeline. I brought it back after the Christmas, December meeting.
December meeting?
Yeah, it was December or November. Yeah, November, I think. National League of Cities Christmas, fall meeting, and that's where I got it.
Okay.
The information. So that's how long.
I remember seeing you in the spring, I'm very sorry.
Yeah.
My seasons are blended.
Yeah.
Counselor Plakis?
Couple of questions. How much staff time are we looking at for one application slash two applications? Is there an estimate or?
Honorable Mayor, Council, I think most communities hire professional engineering firms to prepare this application. But I'm guessing 30 hours of staff time?
Per application. And the outside, the outside specialist that would help us with this application, what are we looking at time-wise and dollar-wise, just a ballpark rough? What type of thing are we looking at? Are we looking at $100,000, $50,000, $20,000, $200,000?
For ballpark purposes only.
For outside, outside help with these applications?
This is purely a ballpark, but I would say $50,000 for Iverson, and of course, significantly more for West Laramie, just because there are so many.
So many incomplete things.
And then, too, that's just preparedness for the application. Once the grant is awarded, we need to do environmental assessments. So as you can imagine, Iverson to 15th Street is a clearer corridor. But when we're talking about an entire neighborhood, that gets into certainly higher costs for that assessment. I will say also, a handful of the applications I did review in trying to understand what it takes to have a competitive application, many of those projects already had their environmental work completed in advance of submitting an application. In fact, I would say half of what is sitting right here already did the environmental work.
So for a West Laramie project, would it be unreasonable to expect some, say, $200,000 for doing all the various studies and so forth?
Gosh, I can't, certainly, I think it would be more than the $50,000 ballpark, but I don't know that it would be in the $200,000 range. I'm sorry, I haven't crunched
No, I'm just.
those numbers. I don't engage often with engineering firms. I might.
I'm just, you know, I'm just, I'm just trying to, trying to get an analysis of,
Yeah.
you know, well, I don't want to go into discussion on it, but it would be helpful if I had an estimation of how much is, what is it going to cost our city in staff time and also outside consultant time, dollar-wise?
Understood. I have to say, I think for a full-on neighborhood, we would be looking at well beyond $100,000, that's just my view. If you look at it just in terms of a percent of total project costs, I mean, we looked at numbers last week that said paving all of our unpaved streets could range anywhere between $29 to $49 million. So if that's your project cost for paving, and you took 10% of that. Now, I don't know if it'd be 10%. I'm like Sarah, we're kind of shooting in the dark.
No, I know.
I think just given the scope of land you'd be dealing with for environmental, also for traffic, the traffic studies have to be done, the safety crash data for every intersection, every street, every, I was looking to see if Sarah brought a copy of one of these, because if you could see them online, I think you'd understand how sort of out of our league we are.
These are just excerpts. If you would like to see just excerpts of applications?
Yeah. Anyway, I think it could be well above $100,000 for a neighborhood-scale project. Now, a smaller project, it would be different.
And it may have already been asked, this is my last question, how, how often do these grants become available?
Well, it appears that there will be one opportunity per year to apply for this grant.
One opportunity per year.
Yeah, and that's assuming that rural communities continue to be eligible, because this is brand new. You know, we've never met the threshold for this before. So what they changed to make us eligible, they could change to make us ineligible, and that's just an uncertainty that we're dealing with. Any other questions? Counselor Hanson?
Just an observation. I think when I brought it back, that was, to me, the exciting part of it, that for the first time, we were eligible.
Exactly.
And I thought, that's something, the early bird catches the worm. You know how many small cities have a project in some kind of germination state that could be used? And that attracted me because I thought, there's a chance, because they'll have to at least award one small city's grant to make it look like this really means something. And up to now, I think it was, what was the, was it $100,000 or whatever? I can't remember what before the city size was, but we were way off somewhere. We couldn't even apply. And so I thought, hey, this is something we might have a shot at, very simply because of where we are with Iverson, you know, that occurred to me. So I'm not speaking for Iverson, but I knew there we were a little further along than with other opportunities. Okay, thank you.
Questions, Vice Mayor?
So, Janine, did you say, right away in the beginning, did you say that the rules haven't been codified or cleared or
Well, they haven't been changed.
for smaller communities?
Right, right. Like they said, you can play with the big kids. They didn't make the requirements fit our size. If I could, I'll just read to you. This, these are the elements of a benefit cost analysis. You have to establish baselines and alternatives, and then you have to make projections for inflation, excuse me, for the value of travel time savings that the project will create, vehicle operating costs for individuals and the community aggregated, safety benefits, emission reduction benefits for the entire project, other issues in benefits estimation. We're working on figuring out, you have to understand all of the capital expenditures, the residual value and remaining service of life for all of those factors. That's why I'm saying, like, you have to calculate safety and then give it a value in dollars. I mean, there's algebraic equations in here. And not that we're afraid of algebra, but we just don't have the staff capacity for it. So that's the concern. They said you can compete with Chicago, but we have never completed an application like this. We have no experience with it, and we think we have to hire out for a firm to really focus and do it for us.
So, can I keep?
Yes.
So, you know, we have, you know, some folks over in the econ department.
Right.
No algebra. So, and we have examples. I mean, I'm looking at an example in May of a 50-year time horizon of their summary of benefits and costs. So, maybe we can give it some, you know, a good college try.
I'd love to engage.
Instead of leaving it completely blank, I guess, is what I'm thinking. Maybe.
Question?
Thanks, Mayor. What is the total dollar amount that you're asking for, for the Iverson project? And then, did you all discuss a total dollar amount for the other application?
I'm sorry, what was the second question, Phoebe? Did we?
The potential dollar amount if we were to submit one for a streets project?
We are estimating that to convert, this is just today, the engineers gave us this number, to convert gravel to street, full construction, about 3.2 or 3.3 million per mile. So depends on how big of a scope you would want to do. Do you want to do just the pavement-ready streets? Do you want to do all of the West Laramie neighborhood? Do you want to do the entire 17 miles throughout the city? And then for Iverson, I think, Sarah, where are we at? Because we had to back out the water and sewer. We're at $5, $6 million per paving?
The entire, Honorable Mayor, Council, the entire project is $10 million, but I can't tell you how much is water and sewer allowed.
I think it was three to four.
And that's the amount that we're asking for, not the amount of the entire project?
The amount of the entire project. We would have to back out the water, sewer, and storm drainage work, and only ask for the street work and the multimodal paths and all of that, which, that's why I said, I think it'd be around five to six million, but we haven't done that math yet.
Great. And, sorry.
Question?
Just a quick follow-up. I assume that our ask for a five to six million dollar project is significantly less than most applications that they look at? Is that what you found in your?
Yeah.
I think that's fair, given the history in the large cities only being eligible for big projects.
Great, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
I think we can only do one project. We cannot combine the three into, say, this is one project. That's not possible.
Mayor, Councilmember, we can't submit, an individual entity can submit three applica- up to, three applications.
You can make up to three?
We can, yeah.
Oh.
So are there any other questions? Okay. Do we have any comments from the public? I don't see any public. Okay. So I want to come back to discussion, and if Council will allow me to kind of explain what I was thinking when we went, when I, when I had this conversation with the city staff this morning. So I spent probably about seven hours reading through all the build grant requirements. And so this is something that we've worked with the National League of Cities for, to bring these grant eligibilities into our sphere. We've asked them repeatedly. We've worked with all of the committees and groups, small cities, the transportation committee, everybody has been working to push the feds to bring the scope down so a city our size could actually access grants. And so, one of the reasons I wanted to talk about potentially submitting one for West Laramie is, number one, this is 100% grant funds. There's no match required, which is amazing in itself. Second, as they've stated, the rules have just been changed to allow small cities in. This was a program that was changed under the Trump administration. We were not eligible to apply last year as a Tiger Grant application. We don't know what the federal politics are going to be after November's election and whether Congress will decide to lock this program back up into big cities, or how they will do it. The only application, the only appropriation right now for the bill, it's a single $1.5 billion appropriation. There's no guarantee that this will be around next year, or it will be accessible to us. So I wish that we had the time to build a better case and put in an application in a year. That would be ideal. I just am very unsure and unsteady whether that opportunity will be there. Couple of other things that stuck out at me is, as an entity, we are allowed to submit up to three applications. There is a cap at $150 million max per state. And the legislation requires that a majority of the money be dispersed into rural areas. Strikes me, if we don't apply, if you don't ask the question, then the answer is no. There are also comments in this grant application that say that there are exceptions for rural communities that cannot reach, there's a conversation in here about revenue generation, and it says rural communities can explain why they may not be able to generate revenue. There are a lot of pieces in here, it says, where if a rural community can't possibly do it, then maybe there's an exception. To be honest, we don't know what the exceptions are yet. We know that YDOT, we believe YDOT is going to submit a couple of applications. So each entity can submit up to three. Each application can get $25 million apiece. So potentially, one entity can walk away with $75 million. So there's still $75 million on the table from Wyoming that's available. We've never had a grant program where we could pave streets before. And I understand that it might be a haphazard application, but if you don't ask, then the answer is no. And so one of the things that I talked to the city manager about is asking YDOT if they can help us. So the biggest piece is doing the cost benefit analysis. And because the rules were just promulgated in June for this application and it became available, we really have had no time. And so the question really needs to be asked to the federal DOT, A, what is your standard for the small rural communities? Because we don't have the capacity to meet what the large cities can do. And second, where are the, what exceptions are they willing to grant? We don't have the answers to those questions yet. So we don't know if we submit an application without a complete cost benefit analysis, where it'll rank in terms of rural communities. So my thoughts are that I don't want to let this opportunity pass us by because it's the only one I've ever seen for this kind of stuff. We've never found a grant where you could do especially 100% grant for streets. It's amazing. And I think it's a serious opportunity we should take a look at. I also think we should have some conversations with our federal congressional delegation and their representatives to find out more of what this looks like. And I hope to be able to do that this week. Whether Council decides to potentially submit a second application or not, I think we should have those conversations. So, Counselor Stoner.
Thanks, Mayor. I actually have another question.
Go for it.
For Janine or Sarah. Can you remind me when this is due?
July 19th.
19th.
Is there any possibility that we could ask for an extension, given the rules changing and?
Sarah listed this today, so I'll let her answer.
Extensions may be granted in the event of a technical error, like, say, grants.gov crashes.
Shoot.
You can hope for that.
Okay, so it's not on the table?
I have another question.
Sorry, I have one more follow-up.
Okay, go ahead.
And if you were to estimate now, what percentage of completion is the Iverson application at?
As it is now, I think we can complete maybe 60% of the application. We can do the easy parts. We have, we do have a lot of, we've already done a lot of groundwork for Iverson Avenue. But that, that percentage of, say, 60% ready to go, isn't equally weighted. That 40% is a lot of work.
Okay. Counselor Plakis?
I have a question for staff. I asked the question, how often this is going to be offered, and you said on a yearly basis. Do you have information that this is only going to be a one-year? Do you have factual information that this is going to be only one year? Or is this just reach, reaching the sky speculation? I don't expect to answer the second part of that.
Honorable Mayor, Council, this, the Tiger Grant, now morphed into what is called the build grant, is something that has been around for years and years.
So there's no?
I don't, I don't see why it would go away. The difference here and the enthusiasm here is that this is a rare opportunity where, under this new administration, there's a strong preference for, or, and not preference, I should say, a required amount that needs to go to rural communities. So that, so that certainly makes this appealing. I can't tell you whether or not that requirement for rural funding will exist next year, I would imagine.
Is there any evidence that it would not be available?
I have none, no.
Thank you.
I guess by the same token, there's no evidence that it will be. That's sort of a.
So it's a reach-in-the-sky estimation?
Any other discussion on this item before we?
That's the problem.
Oh, discussion.
Any, yeah, no, you're good.
Speculation.
If there's any discussion on, on either, before we move for a postponement. So, Counselor Stoner?
I don't know who to direct this question to. What do we have to decide on tonight, whether we're applying for both or one? Is that?
See, Mayor?
Mayor, Council, yes. I think in our conversation this morning with the mayor, we are, we are concerned that we have a capacity to submit the Iverson application. We didn't want you to approve the resolution for two weeks. If you wish for us to prepare two applications, we wanted to give you the facts. We wanted you to understand it will dilute our time to do that. But with your direction, we can prepare two. But our intention was to prepare one. So I would like some direction on whether we focus on two or one, and what the one will be, if it is one. And then, you can postpone. We'll do all the work we can in the next two weeks. And we'll come back with a resolution or two for you to look at in two weeks.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Brian was up first.
Counselor Schuster?
So what I'm understanding, if we do one, we can focus on it and get a higher percentage done?
I'm not, I'm sorry, Mayor, through you, Counselor Schuster, I'm not sure that is true either. As Sarah said, she thinks maybe, you know, 50, 60% of the application we'll be able to complete. But the fact is, this cost benefit analysis, which is a huge part of, of the application, we are not going to complete satisfactorily for either application. So no matter what your decision is, this part is not going to be very well done. We do have some limited traffic data and safety data on Iverson, which is a little bit of this, but it's not the whole thing.
Yeah, I was reading through it. They have emissions, savings, and everything. And CO2- They have emissions, savings, and everything, and CO2 per tons that would be saved if we did this. That went back to the Harney Street overpass, because that was one of the big factors on it, too. Taking it along the way.
Mayor, if I could just piggyback on that. One of the things that we were a little concerned about is you have to produce, you have to produce this, this benefit cost analysis, which we think would have to be outcast. The rules are clear that it has to be replicable in order to be substantiated, and this comes back to what I said initially. You know, we could try to wing it, but it's not going to be probably meeting the standards, where when US DOT experts review it, that it's going to hold up to their muster. So, we don't want to, we don't want to be disingenuous in our approach, right? So. Vice Mayor?
So, I, I guess I don't understand why we are postponing. I mean, and, and maybe I missed the boat here, but.
Why?
Why are, I, I mean.
City Manager, could you address?
The reason we intend, Mayor, through you, the reason we intended to ask for the postponement tonight is that we are still, you know, this is evolving rapidly, even on the Iverson project, before adding any considerations of other paving projects. The Iverson project, we're getting increasing levels of information about, and so Sarah can jump in if she wants to add anything as well, but we didn't want you to even adopt the resolution until we know it's in final format. And because things are moving so quickly, and we're learning so much, so rapidly, we felt that delaying that resolution for two weeks would allow us to put the most accurate information in front of you for your decision and your approval in two weeks. Is there anything else?
So, we're still filling in the blanks.
I think that's a fair statement, Councilor Schuster. Councilor Hanson, and then Councilor Stoner?
It, it strikes me, I mean, if this cost analysis is the big factor, I think you could take a first stab at it and say, these are the elements, because they're listed in there, that could contribute to this cost analysis. At this point, since this is so new for us, and since this, and we're so late, maybe we can make a statement, we'll have exact figures coming later, but at least we, I think we know some factors, you know? For example, I mentioned public transportation, that would be an environmental impact, that would, would be important. Opening bike lanes would be a factor. I've seen that in these, in these applications, you know, where it says, that makes less, for less car traffic, you know, vehicle traffic, et cetera. So, I think one could have a stab at, you know, the, at least a statement. We hope to fill this in with, with some definitive data, but here are the factors, I'm talking about the Ivensen project right now, that would contribute to savings in, in that respect. That we can't fill in all the, the data at this point, seems obvious to anybody who would read this thing, and maybe they give us some grace there, you know, because this is so sudden that it has come up, that that's what occurs to me.
Councilor Stoner?
Um, thanks, Mayor. Just for clarification, once again, on the timeline. So, tonight, you don't need a motion in particular, you just need direction, like, general consensus direction to work on one or two, or do you, are you looking for something more formal?
No, Mayor, through you, I think what we're looking for is that you will move to postpone the resolution that's on the floor to a date certain of July 17. But that you will give us direction. Here's, here's really where we are. I mean, staff, I, I asked for these guys to track their time, because we do that by code. We've spent 13 hours on this today, between engineering and my office. If we're going to go forward and basically commit every hour of Sarah's time for the next two and a half weeks, probably significant amount of mine and engineering's time, because we have some data on Ivensen, we've been working on this project for five years, we have almost nothing for West Laramie. So, I need direction from you to allocate that staff time and to prepare two applications.
Okay, but not?
But not formal, correct.
Great.
Yes, thank you. Vice Mayor?
I, I think I've forgotten what I was going to say. Oh, no, I didn't. Councilor, I'm sorry. Councilor Hanson makes a really valid point, because I think part of the cost benefit analysis in bigger communities, when they move from zero bike lanes to two or three bike lanes, they probably did that on the south side of town, over the same amount of, of miles in, in similar populations with heavy and high traffic. So, they could compare what occurred in the past on X highway or X street in their community, in their greater community area of millions of people. You know, we don't have, we don't have that. We have no idea how much emissions is going to be saved if we add bike lanes going down Ivensen. We, there's no way, I mean, we can, we can think and hope that more people are going to ride their bikes, but we don't have even a comparator, right? And I think, I think your point is, is valid. You know, it is kind of a stab in the dark for smaller communities, so.
We're working hard at it.
So, I think we just go for it. And, and if I could just keep on going, I, I'm going to apologize to my friends who want, who, council members who want to go with two grants, but I'm perfectly fine with one and, and having it be Ivensen, and, because it's hard work. I've done, been there, done that. Federal grants, you know, they're very specific. They're very, very specific. Even your spacing, you could get thrown out for spacing, and not 12-point font, and not having the right-sized margins. I mean, it's, it's crazy in terms of the requirements sometimes. I don't know, I don't know about DOT, but anyway, just saying, we'll be lucky if we get one, right?
Councilor Stoner?
Thanks, Mayor. I'm just going to summarize a couple thoughts I've been having. It just seems like we're in kind of an unfortunate situation with timing, both in the ruling change. It seems like the process itself hasn't changed to accommodate our realities, and they're still working those bugs out. I really hope this funding is available in the future, so we can get good at it, both us and them, hopefully. I think my main concern is, I don't want the Ivensen application, which you all chose strategically and have been working on. I don't want the quality of that to be sacrificed, because we're trying to spread ourselves too thin. So, my personal direction would be to spend your effort on the Ivensen application first, make sure it's the best possible product it can be, and then maybe dive into talking with partners and talking with YDOT, and trying to put something on paper for the other application. That's kind of where I am. I'm really hoping that this isn't a one-year thing. It seems to me that if we are interested in making a really competitive grant application for something as complex as street paving, fill in the blank where it might even be, then we need to spend probably a good six months talking about it in advance, which hopefully we'll have next time. I do think it's important funding that we should seek for paving, and I agree with everything the mayor has said about that. And if we have time to throw something together this year, I think that there are a few things working with us, with all the statistics that Andy brought, Mayor Summerbo brought. So, that's kind of where I'm sitting.
What, what was the deadline that it has to be submitted?
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth of, of July, right? That's two days after the 17th. Okay. Yes. Well, if we don't, if we vote for a postponement today, well, then they won't get started on it, you know?
We're going to direct it.
Councilor Hanson, the, the staff are working on it right now.
Yeah.
We're voting for a postponement potentially, because it's, the resolution is not quite where the staff want it.
Oh, okay, yeah.
But they're going to continue working on the grant for Ivensen.
And, and bring it back for us to do it on the 17th.
Right.
Honorable Mayor, Council, I want to be very clear. Typically, we wouldn't present something to you if we were this iffy. But we also know that it's not fair to you to have you make a decision two days before a deadline. So, we kind of jammed this in, and to make sure that you would have time to deliberate. But in doing so, we had this pause where we thought, oh, gosh, there's a significant part of this application that frankly cannot be completed, and other parts that are rough. And then, in tandem with that, then we did have the conversations this morning about Ivensen Avenue, so combined, that, I just wanted to explain how we got to this, and that it isn't our typical habit to give you a resolution that hasn't been fully vetted. I just want to be clear on how we got to that.
Councilor Plakus?
Yeah, I agree with what, what Councilor Stoner said. I think that, I think it's, I don't want to do anything to compromise the Ivensen, and I think when you start splitting up staff time, and you start working on two applications at the same time, as, as been said, I, I don't think that's a good way to go. Also, when I, I'm not a fan of turning in half-baked applications. I'm not a fan of turning in incomplete applications. I'm not a fan of turning in haphazard applications, and these are all definitions I've heard tonight of what that West Laramie application would look like. I've also heard that the likelihood is, or there's, there's no reason to, to not feel that this type of grant will be available next year, where we can prepare for it, and we can do our homework, and we can talk about it, and so forth and so on. The other thing I'm concerned about is, is that I don't like spending money on something that doesn't have a really good possibility of pass, of getting, of succeeding. And it sounds like the Ivensen has the best possibility with the least amount of money and the least amount of staff time for succeeding. If we get into West Laramie right now, you're looking at outside, outside consultants and so forth, of probably a couple hundred thousand at the minimum, $100,000, and a very, very, very low chance of success. I was in construction all my life, and guess what? I didn't spend a lot of time on bids that I felt that I didn't have a good opportunity, because they took, they took an awful lot of time of me to do them. And this is, I relate that to this. So, thank you.
Councilor Stoner?
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to add that I would love to give direction, if other council people are interested, to also add a note in with our application that kind of explains the disparity between infrastructure, frankly, in our state, let alone within our city, and the application requirements and reporting that they have. I think that highlighting that, if there's an opportunity to, with a cover letter or something, would be really important. I don't know if other folks think there's room for, if there's even an opportunity to do that with such a black and white application, but.
So, I guess I'll, I'll make a couple of quick comments here. I think that there are some, there are some possibilities here. I, I want to make clear to everybody, I support the Ivensen project as the first application. I think it is further down the pipeline than the West Laramie application. I think it's a good application to put in, and I hope that we are successful with it. But on the other hand, I see no, there's, there's no detraction to putting in the second application. It doesn't harm the first. It doesn't affect the first, it's just a second application. But what is also available here is there, there is planning money. And I would like to, if we really are going to be looking at several hundred thousand dollars of environmental studies, and we don't feel that we're ready, then we need to put in an application for planning money this time. We need to look at the options that are available to move this forward, because I don't want to be sitting in the same spot in six months, going, well, gee, we don't have the money, or we don't have the whatever, to get this project fully vetted and ready for an application. Councilor Plakus, I really do hope that this is available next year, but right now, the federal system is so, day-to-day, who knows what's going on, that, that I have no faith that it'll be there. I have no faith that it won't be there. I have absolutely no idea what the next year will hold, and Congress very specifically made a one-time appropriation for 2018. The tiger grant has generally been caught up in the transportation funding bill and been five-year, generally, stocks of money, and this one is not. This is, to the tune, the last tiger grant had a $450 million year appropriation. This is a 1.5 billion one-time appropriation. So, there are some differences here that concern me, and I want to take advantage of it. So, I would like council to consider giving direction to staff to let us have the conversations with YDOT, to see if they can provide the technical assistance. They have to figure out how to do the cost benefit analysis for their projects that they're doing here. They're also the holder of all the traffic technical data in the state. They have all the accident reports, they have tons of traffic studies, they have this stuff. There are state highways that run through West Laramie, and obviously, Third Street, and the, that affect the other gravel areas in town. So, we haven't even asked them the question, because they're out of the office until July 9th, whether or not to think it helped. We tried to call. They're out of the office, all of them, apparently. So, we haven't had that chance to call. We haven't had the chance to, to talk with the, the feds that are running this program, to ask them the questions about, hey, the rules don't match up, or what, where are you willing to cut the slack with the rural communities? So, I would appreciate the council not completely shutting it down and letting the staff have some, some room to have some questions on Monday and Tuesday to better scope this out. And if what we bring forward is just a $200,000 or $300,000 planning grant to cover an environmental study, and a traffic study, or whatever else it is that needs to be for the next round of applications, and that's where we sit, I'm okay with that. And I will hope and cross my fingers that they don't change the rules and that this money is available next year. But I think we should take advantage of it and not let it pass us by, because I have never, ever, ever seen another program with 100% grant funding for streets in rural areas. So, that's my request to council, is approve the Ivensen project, give that go-ahead, and give the staff a little bit of room to have more, a few more conversations on Monday and Tuesday. Councilor Stoner?
Thanks, Mayor. I, um, will go along with those sentiments, but just reemphasizing that the quality of the Ivensen application comes first, which I think we're all on the same page about. I also just want to note that the idea of making an application around planning seems like a really good idea. But something, continuing the conversation seems reasonable to me. I just don't want staff to get into a position where they're sacrificing the quality of our initial intent.
Is there any, Councilor Hanson?
Since project number one, which is unknown all around, has public transportation, I want to reiterate that in the Ivensen project, the public transportation aspect is a positive, not a negative, from what I've seen in, in applications that were granted before. So, that's part of it, you know? I just wanted to reiterate that.
Any other discussion or comments, Councilor Plakus?
Yeah, I, I have no problem with allowing staff to do a little more research for a couple of days, but I also go back to what I said. I'm not interested in submitting half-baked applications, incomplete applications, frankly, applications that don't have a very good, reasonable chance of success. So, if the conclusion is, after a couple of days, it hasn't changed, from what I've heard, I'll stand by what I've said.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, a couple of days worth of research is fine, but I think I'm with Councilor Stoner. You know, the priority needs to be Ivensen. And to my knowledge of grants with the federal government, if it's incomplete, it's tossed immediately. So, so, and if it's one minute late, or 30 seconds late, a second late, it's tossed. If your margins are off, it's tossed. You know, they're very stringent, so.
Kind of like college.
Yeah, so.
Councilor McKinney?
Sorry. Well, and what she just said is that if it's an incomplete application, then we should not submit any application, because staff has said that it would be 50%. So, but I'm for two.
Thank you, Councilor McKinney. Any other comments? All right. Do I have somebody who's willing to put a postponement motion on the floor?
I move to postpone.
To July 17?
To July 17.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do you want, on their, specific to one application or two applications?
No, we don't need to do that.
They have enough direction.
But we need to say that while we're postponing.
We're postponing the resolution, sorry.
Are you, are you comfortable with the direction?
Um, Mayor and Council, I'll restate it. My understanding is that we can spend a few days doing a little more investigatory work. My understanding is that we can spend a few days doing a little more investigatory work, but that if it doesn't seem viable, then we will focus our efforts on a strong Iverson application as the number one priority.
Yep.
That kind of general consensus. I think that's direction.
Yep.
Didn't, didn't you mention that possibility would be a planning grant for the other one? That, that might be a route to go with the other one, you know, with the West Laramie one.
Yep. All right. So, Counselor Stoner, I'll let you restate your motion.
Sure. I'm trying to find this on the agenda so I can actually state it the right way. Okay. I move to postpone the resolution authorizing the submittal of the Build Transportation Discretionary Grant application to the United States Department of Transportation.
And I'll still second it.
To July 17?
To July 17.
Thank you very much. Seconded by Counselor Schuster. Any discussion on the postponement? Any comments from the public on the postponement? City Clerk, can you do roll call on the postponement, please?
McKinney absent, Polikas?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Stoner?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion, that item is postponed until July 17, 2018. Item number 12, Counselor Polikas.
Thank you. This is...
I was trying to postpone, so we don't vote on the whole thing.
Yep, no, we're good.
Thank you. This is a consideration of a bid award for the Laramie Animal Control Furnace Project. I would move that council award the bid for the Laramie Animal Control Furnace Project to Haynes Mechanical Systems Incorporated of Greenwood Village, Colorado, in the amount not to exceed $178,221, and a reserve of $1,779 for potential project contingencies along with approval of the construction contract between owner and contractor for a total amount not to exceed $180,000, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Stoner. Director Fieser?
Honorable Mayor, City Council, this project has been discussed in the past. It was discussed as we had applied for the WAM, WCCA Energy Lease Program in the amount of $100,000. Staff did advertise, it was advertised in the local paper, it was also advertised through our Quest CDN network. Unfortunately, we did only have one completed bid. The local company was in the running, I was told, up until the last day of submittal, and then opted not to submit the bid. We have been very pleased with the work that our maintenance contractor has been doing for us on our systems, and we feel that it's a good bid, and we'd like to move forward with the project.
Great questions. Counselor Hanson?
I think I just hinted at this ahead of time, and I can't find it right now. Your budget sheet says, you know, $180,000, but it's not broken down that the $100,000 we have already in the bank, or whatever, as a grant opportunity, right? Is that, do I understand?
Honorable Mayor, through you, we've been awarded the lease program. We haven't requested the funds just yet. They're able to be requested anytime following July 1, and the accounting division is going to be doing that for us, and will request that funding.
Yeah. Should, should we change the budget sheet to reflect that in some fashion? Because right now, it doesn't include any of that, you know? I just read it somewhere and thought, aha, actually, we only put forward from the funds that we have $78,000.
Honorable Mayor, through you, in the fiscal year 19 budget, it was approved, and in the budget notes, it shows the $100,000 energy lease plus the other amounts that are in there. I don't believe it's necessary to change the budget line.
Good. I just want to be sure that it's reflected correctly. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions for Director Fieser? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Comments from the public? There is no public. Any other discussion from council on this item? City Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
Gabriel?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Stoner?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. All right, so we are approaching 8 o'clock. Why don't we break, why don't we take a 10-minute break and come back and finish the rest of the agenda?
Okay.
Okay.
The drinking part, there you go.
All right, we're back, and we're going to go to item number 13. Counselor Shumway?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to approve resolution 2018-48 authorizing an inter-fund loan to the General Fund in the amount not to exceed $3 million from the Water Fund for a portion of the project for the Municipal Service Center Building with appropriate interest earned and requiring repayment of the loan not to exceed 15 years, and have the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second. Seconded by the Vice Mayor. Director Bree?
Hi, Mayor and council. I'm, I have a handout which might help explain how this inter-fund works, and I wanted to go over that we're looking at funding for the Municipal Services Building. Normally, the, normally, the city has not done long-term debt within the General Fund just because of the affordability. We had, normally, we do loans, lease purchase with equipment, or we do the WAM lease. In, I had to come up with some options to help fund the general portion for, for the Municipal Service Center. And I want to go through some of the things that are on this inter-fund loan. First of all, the amount is up to 3 million. Right now, it's about 2.8, where the cost estimates are coming in. However, we may have to bid this job. It may come in higher. That's why I said not to exceed 3 million. Wherever it's coming in, I won't know until the final bids are here. So, just to understand if you're looking at the, at the packet, that is something. I wanted to go over some of the strengths of an inter-fund loan versus a building authority and kind of explain the differences so you can understand. Both are legal. They're in the state statutes. They allow you to do an inter-fund loan or a building authority. However, the, the loan from the inter-fund loan is very simple, easy to comply with, and it's less risk. There's, right now, the city has done an inter-fund loan back in the 2000s. We did it with our pension funds. At the time, we were over the pension funds. And the state does inter-fund loans very, they have them all throughout their, their CAFRA and everything. They do inter-fund loans. It's very, it's a very common thing for cities to do. The building authority is more complicated. There's an AG opinion that the building authority is really outside the city. We have to work with a nonprofit to set it up. You have requirements from an AG opinion that we have to be, have document, documentation has to be very substantial, and you have to have separation of duties between the city and the building authority. So, it's a little more complexed and harder to set up. Most of the building, building authorities at this time are more with the schools. LCCC uses it, and Sheridan College. Jackson has used it, but it's very rare that cities do use it. Another thing that makes the loan a, a good option for me is that with the inter-fund loan, we have no fees. We don't have to pay for a bond attorney. We don't have to pay for trustee fees. We don't have to pay for financial fees. All those fees go away. That saves about probably $100,000 to $175,000, depending on the loan, the trustee bonding, you're going to have that. So, the, so the General Fund is saving taxpayer money if we go this way. Also, in the bonding world, you have to have a bond reserve, so you have to extra money for the bond. It's the maintenance of the bonds. It's, it's required by the trustee. The trustee, you get it paid back, but you have to, they have trustee fees, and you have to invest and try to offset those fees. So, it's another complication that we have to do. One of the reasons I also wanted to have this inter-fund loan had to do with that there's a call feature on bonds, and if, what that means is that I cannot pay off the debt early. I have to come up with a call feature. Usually, they want at least eight to nine years. I would say nine years if you're doing a 15-year loan. If you do a call feature, I cannot pay off the loan until nine years. Why you have to do a call feature or have some years in that is because the bond will skyrocket, and it will cost you more because it's not a guarantee for the bondholders. They want to have some rate of return. So, that, that's a feature that goes away if we want to sell our properties and put it towards this debt, and maybe then have extra opportunity for streets or other stuff because this debt's paid off early. It allows the council to do that. Another thing that I wanted to talk about is, you know, this is a, an investment for the Water Fund, and that's how I'm looking at it. It really has nothing to do with rates. As a treasurer, which is part of my function, we have about 27 to 30 million in cash in this fund evenly throughout. It's a huge fund. It's 98 million in assets in the fund. You have about 20, 27 to 30 million in cash per year, and this cash is pretty steady. Our rates are pretty steady. The cash is used for reserves, five to six months reserves that we have. We have cash that we're looking for funding capital. When you're looking at this cash, as a treasurer, I have to look at liquidity. I need some money to pay for my bills and do whatever, but I also have to invest that cash. And so, when you're looking at, from that perspective, just as anything, you want to earn money as much to the taxpayer or to the people in all our funds. We don't want to sit here and keep cash in our, with a .002 rate of return in most of the, what's going on. So, this was, this is being set up like an investment for the Water Fund. The Water Fund will earn 2.75%, and with that, it's about 654,000 in interest that they will earn, and that's what we're looking at. They have, I can either invest in bonds, which are not as safe, you get callable. It's, the money's hooked up, or I can do this. It helps the General Fund, and it helps the Water Fund. So, that is why I'm recommending for the funding of the Public Works Building to go through this inter-fund process.
And thank you for stating the interest rate because I was going to if you did.
Okay.
Questions? I'm sorry, did you have more?
No, unless you guys, I do, but I can...
Counselor Gabriel?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just curious if the bid were to come over the 3 million, then we just dip into the reserve?
I don't think it'll come over the 3 million because he has pretty good cost estimates, and we do have extra funding. We have, of course, this is in addition, the consensus money that is going there. I mean, I could, if it was way over, I might come and ask you to extend the, the amount, but I, I think it's pretty safe.
Other questions? Counselor Hanson?
Explain to me, early payment of debt, is this like when you buy a house, no prepayment penalty or something like that? It's the same thing, right?
Right. So, in, when you're doing bonds through a bonding authority, you cannot pay it off early. Where if we do an inter-fund loan, if we, for example, you know, think that those forestry properties we want to sell and we can want to put toward this debt, I can pay it off anytime. Or if I come into a whirlwind of money, I can pay it off anytime. But it's, what it does is then it frees up this, this loan to help maybe do a loan for other stuff. If we want to street or do something, it might help then, so...
Other questions? All right. Thank you. Any comments from the public? No public. Discussion by council? All right. City Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
Gabriel?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McKinney absent, Polikas?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Stoner absent. Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
No.
That's seven yeses, one no, and two absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries.
Six yeses, sorry.
Yay!
One no, two absent.
Still carries. All right, let's move on to item number 14. Counselor Schuster?
Thank you. Title of this is Original Ordinance Number 1986, amending Chapter 12 of the Municipal Code by deleting Sections 12.08.110 and 12.08.120, and amending Sections of 12.08.090 and 12.08.100 relating to the obstructions of the city rideaway. I move to approve on first reading, original ord...
Counselor Schuster, just a second. City Attorney?
Uh, Mayor, Counselor Schuster, I noticed that there's a transposition in the motion you're about to read that should be Original Ordinance Number 1986, not 68.
Oh, it's one way on once, one, and one way on the other. So, which one is it?
86.
86, okay.
Counselor Schuster?
I move to approve on first reading, Original Ordinance 1986, amending Chapter 12, deleting Municipal Code by deleting Sections 12.08.110 and 12.08.120, and amending Sections 12.08.090 and 12.08.100 relating to obstructions on city streets, sidewalks, alleys, and public easements.
Second.
Seconded by the Vice Mayor. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor, council. This amendment to your ordinances came about as a result of the discussion you've been having about, specifically about sidewalk obstructions. When I took a look at the old ordinances in conjunction with the city manager, for lack of a better term, the old ordinances were bizarre, and they're a holdover from an earlier area, era. They were unclear, unclear exactly what they related to. There's a lot of discussion of construction and not much else. So, I decided to try to draft an ordinance that was absolutely clear and general enough to cover every situation. As I said in the cover sheet, the amendment tries to make it absolutely clear that any obstruction in a right-of-way, be it street, sidewalk, alley, or just our, one of our public easements, requires either a permit or to be allowed by regulation. The reason it's important to say both is that some things we're not going to require a permit for. For instance, the lemonade stand that can go up on the sidewalk because internally, we won't require permits. Our regulations will allow it. But any, anything serious, for instance, building in the sidewalks for businesses will require a permit. The city will determine those regulations, city manager. Any fees associated with any of this will come before you. For instance, the, it's anticipated that on third reading of this ordinance, the fees that you had discussed, you know, over the last month will come before you for approval. Any questions?
Questions? Counselor Hanson?
I, I'm just looking at the Section 100, Obstructions Permit, and you say the city manager may establish regulations. Should this rather we can establish?
Well...
I, I'm just a little confused here.
Well, Mayor, Counselor Hanson, it's always better to say "may" in these situations. They may. I mean, when you start putting "shall" in an ordinance...
No, I didn't say "shall." I said "can," because the "may" sort of implies "may not."
Correct.
So, that's...
Can also implies cannot.
Yeah.
I mean, really stick with you.
So, it's all right with you.
With you, absolutely.
Any other questions for the city attorney on this? All right. Thank you. Any comments from the public? Saying no public. Any discussion from council, or any comments on this?
Maybe...
Counselor Gabriel?
Mayor, I talked to you during the break a little bit about this. I'm a little concerned since nobody is here from Laramie Main Street, but you seem to feel that they're in pretty good shape with this.
Counselor Gabriel, to that point, my understanding is, yes, they are in good shape with these ordinance changes. They just have comments on the fees.
Okay, very good.
That were brought before us.
That was my concern. Thank you.
And I will double-check and make sure that they are fully aware for second reading, but I, I don't think they have any concerns here. Counselor Hanson?
Will we then add a fee schedule at a future point, or just leave that... Will we then add a fee schedule at a future point or just leave that open?
Counselor Hanson, the intention is to bring forward a fee schedule with the third reading of this ordinance.
With the third reading.
Okay, thank you.
All right. City Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
Hanson?
Yes.
McKinney absent. Polikas?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Stoner absent. Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's seven yeses, zero nos, and two absent, Your Honor.
Thank you.